Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Today is Wednesday, November 4, 2015. It is now 4:30 in the afternoon and we shall begin our council meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Ron Rensing.
Here.
Randy Funker.
Here.
Brad Hent.
Here.
Greg Giel.
Here.
Zach Sawyer.
Here.
Thank you, and first on the agenda is public comments. So now is the time, if you would like to make public comments, if you would come up to the podium and just state your name, please, and share with us any comments that you have.
I'm Jill Collins from here in Sheldon, and I'm here because my husband wanted me to say some things about an article we read in the October 14 newspaper here in Sheldon about the event center. I think because we're both very fiscally conservative, it alarmed us when we read that there was a projected deficit after the study was done. I believe it said 100,000 a year for at least the first few years. And also that in the primary area that we would draw people from, that the population is getting older, it's not even big enough to really support the event center, and that we would need to draw from the secondary area. And in our opinion, that draw seemed unlikely due to the fact that, well, let's say a wedding, for example. Really, how many people are going to ask everybody to drive from Lamar's to Sheldon to go to a reception? That kind of thinking is what we were thinking. Also, because our population is getting older. We did understand that having a nice event center could be a draw for people, perhaps to like our community, to perhaps bring a business here, but as far as moving here, that's not our experience with moving. And we've moved five times before settling in Sheldon and working at the college until our retirement, but when we moved, we moved because of one thing and one thing only. And we feel, in our opinion, that it's a primary motivator, and that is for a job. And that unless we can increase the number of jobs available in Sheldon in business and industry, we didn't see the event center, per se, as being a draw to move here. Also, it seems like although, you know, we could get a grant to help with the money and the tax increment financing, I do not understand it all, however, it just seems like, you know, there really isn't any free money. It's coming from people of Iowa or from our city or county, you know? And our question is that if it's, if the event center as proposed, at the cost proposed, is it really worth it financially? Is it going to, you know, give us the bang for our buck that we really want? And I guess, in Stephen's, my opinion, it doesn't seem to be. And I guess we would like the council to just consider that as this moves along. I know it started as the event center, a scaled-back version, and then it grew and grew and grew. And one question, I can't remember how many people now the proposed seating is for. Was it?
I think it's up to 400, was it?
Yeah, 400, 450 seated, up to 750 stadium seating.
You know, I don't know many people who get married and have 400 people. Maybe they do, and I just don't know them because they don't invite me. But if the event center, however...
It's because there's no place for them to go.
If the event center was planned so that the city or someone was going to actually run events, like have concerts and, you know, have a full schedule of events throughout the year, well, that would make more sense to me. But to have it primarily as receptions, or I don't even know what business and industry would have a meeting with 400 people, you know, I really don't. It just seems like maybe there could be a better way that our tax dollars could be used, and maybe the council might consider, as this goes along, the scaled-back version. I mean, really, how many weddings are over 250 people? You know, so we just, my husband and I just wanted to bring our concerns and have you consent, continue to mull it over because it is a big commitment. And I guess, again, in closing, we would accentuate that it will be jobs that bring people to Sheldon. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill. And there are no other public comments, so we will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda?
Motion. Support.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Funker.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Giel.
Aye.
Rensing.
Aye.
And moving into new business, number three, considering the final estimate, including the retainer, for the regional airport lighting rehab project, and that's in the amount of $11,947.30. Thank you.
Sawyer.
Okay. Take your pick.
Ron.
If there's no discussion, may I have a roll call, please?
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Giel.
Aye.
Rensing.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Thank you. And then number four is considering the approval of statement of completion on the regional airport 1533 lighting rehab project.
Make the motion to approve.
Support. And Scott, did you want to comment something?
No, the only thing I was going to say, this is kind of an FAA requirement. We don't do this on all of our projects, but the FAA does require that you basically officially accept it, so we basically have a document that we sign that we officially accept the project, so.
Wonderful.
So I was going to comment.
Are they still scheduled for a flyover, or?
They've actually done the flyover already. Yep, yep. So, as you know, it's kind of been completed on a temporary basis because we have it temporarily housed in that building, but they still did the flyover and whatnot, and it's passed in the inspection, so. We've even submitted, I think, for a reimbursement for that flyover, too, already, so.
Good deal.
It's met all the requirements.
Okay. May I have a roll call, please?
Rensing.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Giel.
Aye.
And number five, the wrungar improvement project, we are considering pay estimate number two. That is in the amount of $114,258.16.
Support.
Thank you. Questions? Roll call, please.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Rensing.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Giel.
Aye.
Thank you. And now Todd is going to share information with us regarding the wastewater treatment facilities planning proposal.
What you have before you is what I'll guess, I'll call the first step in attempting to start to comply with our new wastewater permit. We did receive the permit, so we have already changed some of our testing frequencies and what we're testing for to start complying with those type of things with the permit. Now we need to start working forward towards the treatment end of the permit. So DNR requires several steps prior to doing any facility planning or anything. And in a nutshell, or in a short version, this is the majority of those steps. So this study will do some historical flows, project long-term flows, predict long-term loads that we have to remove, look into what we can do, what processes might be available for nutrient reduction, and some of the other things that are required by the DNR. I know this is not normal, that we would bring you a $19,000 study in the middle of the year and say, hey, let's do something to chip budget for, but talking with the engineers, we have, in our permit, we have a 52-month compliance schedule term to meet all the requirements of the permit. Sounds like a long time, but some of this stuff could be very time-consuming, so we would like to get started. Don't think this phase will be done in time for budget. Maybe consider, you know, the next phase, as far as having it for you in December or January. Maybe coming back spring, early summer with second phase. So been baiting on having conversations with the engineer, and I know Scott and I talked this afternoon, of, you know, we put some numbers together of potentially what the second phase could cost, so we could maybe try to budget without problems. But other than that, if there's any questions on what you read here in the proposal, I would like to get started on this if we can.
You said second phase. What's involved in that second phase, then?
If you look on the second page of the proposal, you see a lot of the "to be determined." So we talk about the anti-dag alternatives, the facility plan, their nutrient reduction, the chloride compliance reporting. So we'll do a lot of testing in this first phase, and we'll explore what all treatment possibilities might be available to us to meet the requirements of the permit. Then in the second phase, myself and the wastewater personnel might say, well, we don't, we don't even want to consider this type of treat. We know that Spencer has it, or Des Moines has it, or whatever, and it's, it costs a lot to operate. The operators all say it doesn't work well, but options B, C, and D, we think are viable, or the engineer will tell us what options C think is viable. Then we'll, we'll look more in depth in those options, look into cost to construct and cost to operate. That'll work.
Is that making an assumption that this current process that we have is no longer?
The current process that we have, the RBCs that we currently have, will not do everything that the new permit is forcing us to do. Now, there are, it's our understanding, there are chemical additions that we can add along with RBC that will probably get us to where we need to be. Some of this testing in Phase One, or what I'm calling Phase One, or Step One, will help us know if that's true. The question we're going to ask, have to ask ourselves, is RBC is 1970's technology, and obviously we're in 2015, there's a lot of, not a lot of new technology. Do we want to switch, or do we want to retrofit and try to stick with what we got?
Would that be part of Phase Two?
We'll have some of those discussions in the second step.
Because the change is going to be significant.
Yes.
Yeah. In a nutshell, Phase Two would probably get us to the Phase Three, which is probably, what are, what are we changing? That would probably, once you think, Todd?
Yeah.
I mean, Phase Two probably isn't like a construction document for engineering.
No, that would be Phase Three.
That'd be Phase Three. Phase Two's more, maybe more planning based on the information of our loads, the information off our permit that we gather. It's like when we do, compared to the water system, we do all this flow testing and whatnot. Then we decide on, all right, by putting this pipe, an eight-inch pipe from point A to point B, that will determine what the improvement will be. It's kind of similar here.
I asked Ryan Norman today, I said, "Do you have an idea what Phase Two may cost us?" And he said, "Do you know what kind of treatments we might do? Do you know how many of them you want me to look at? Do you know how thorough do you want me to look at those kind of treatments? You know, are we looking at one type, or are we looking at five?" He says that's really hard to give us an answer at this point until this is, this is completed.
It's kind of a necessary evil, like we said, you know? We didn't know the permit officially was coming this year, else we probably would have started gauging to budget even dollars to do a study like this. We try to incorporate that if we can, so. Like Todd mentioned, we don't have 19,500 specifically identified in our budget this year. My recommendation is, is that we pay it out of the depreciation account. We do have funds in our depreciation account, and then as we go forward and stuff, to use those funds to basically cover this. Then the hope is, once we get in the budget time of the year, you know, December, January, February, if we can start narrowing down maybe what that Phase Two cost is, at least we can budget that amount for the next phase in the next budget year in '16, '17.
But this is a proprietary fund, so it should come out of wastewater.
It's out of wastewater, but out of our wastewater depreciation account. Yes.
But I mean, that's where the money should come from.
Yes, yep.
I did speak with Ryan a little bit today, and he said there are SRF funds available, loans, they're not grants, but loans available for this type of stuff, but he stopped the next application in December. He said, "Plus, the only kicker to that is if you apply for these frontside engineering funds, then when you do your big project, which we don't know how many dollars that'll be, plus..." So then you're locked into that type of financing.
And plus for this, as far as from a financing standpoint for this, I mean, we have the cash in our depreciation account to cover it, but I'd rather use it if we go and also have a million-dollar project down the road, looking at SRF or community block grant funding and grants, that's certainly where we'd want to pursue some of that funding source.
Thank you, Todd. Are there any other questions for Todd, or do you have any other information you need to share?
No, I mean, I've, I've talked for an hour about it.
You betcha. We don't want you, so. If there's no questions or comments, then do we have a motion to approve this preliminary planning proposal?
Make the motion to approve it. We've got to get started on it.
Any comments? May I have a roll call, please?
Funker.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Giel.
Aye.
Rensing.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Excuse me. Number seven on our agenda, we have some things to talk about with the Sheldon Crossing Pond, and Scott has been in communication with the O'Brien County Conservation Director and has a few ideas of how to go through the winter.
Yeah, I don't know if this is comparable to a wastewater treatment facility, but it's going to sound like a similar discussion. We've been talking, and Todd and I have been talking for a while, and as you're aware, we've been working with the County Conservation Director, Terry Bolches and whatnot, with different things out in our pond area, and what we should do, shouldn't be doing, et cetera. Here recently, he contacted me and said, "Hey, have you guys considered any type of aeration in your pond?" I immediately responded back to him and said, "Well, no, we didn't look at aeration because when you were here a year and a half ago, we talked about that of, you know, do we need to move the water?" He says, "No, you're fine. You got great plant growth. Everything looks good." Well, we didn't have the discussion when we actually stocked it with fish. What he's recommending is, in order to keep those fish alive, he says we probably could be fine, we're not sure, but basically what they do in a lot of their ponds is they put an aerator in those ponds. It's not one of the big fountain things, and that's something down the road, whether we'd want to pursue and look at. Basically, it's a kind of an underwater aerator system, type system, that basically moves the water, puts oxygen back into the water to basically help keep your fish alive. He's recommending, he gave us a contact, Todd's been in contact with his Beamer Fisheries, who O'Brien County actually has used a lot, so that's who they recommend we communicate with. We don't have an official proposal to put in front of you. Todd has been kind of going back and forth, been trying to gauge specific prices on it because one, there's two different elements. One is the actual aerator system that we'd have to put in the water. They're trying to size it, determine what we'd need. We need one, two, three with our sized body water. And the other issue is running electricity to the actual pond so we can plug this aerator system in to basically run. So what I'm asking for, if you'd be willing to do so, is give us a little leniency here. We're estimating upwards, probably close to about $12,000 is probably the high end. We're hoping it's the high end of where we'd have to be at. We're certainly going to try to get it lower than that if we can, but I guess we feel it's probably necessary to, to get some type of aeration system installed in there so we don't have a...
County Conservation help us at all?
At this point in time, they are not interested in assisting with cost sharing. They were very willing to offer and provide us information.
And Beamer doesn't install the system either, so, Ron, if you want to bring your boat back, we're going to need a boat.
Maybe help, have them help us with putting it in and where, you know, maybe some of that stuff, but a cost-share type thing, as I, we've mentioned in the past, being in the city limits, they're not super interested in putting cost-type items into, into that pond.
What kind of fish did they put in there, and how many? Or the, what's the value? Do we have any determination?
They put bluegills and some crappies and...
Bass.
And some bass.
I don't remember on the numbers, to be honest with you. It was quite a few.
Ames said to put in per acre feet of water and whatnot.
Do we have any, I mean, are we talking $20,000 worth of fish, or $2,000 worth of fish? It seems crazy, it's been 12,000 if we've only got a couple thousand dollars of fish.
My next question is, how do you...
Well, I was just going to say, it's something, I mean, it's not the aeration system just for this year, and then it's bad and goes away. This is something we'd probably keep running in there every year, year-round, all the time, so you'd have to weigh that over the number of years you've stocked it.
Correct, but he's saying it may work, it may not, I mean, if we find out in the first year that it doesn't work, then we know.
I think the aeration system would basically be not putting in the aerator. We just want to take a chance and not put the aerator in. I think the aerator, I think they're pretty confident we're not going to have...
Yeah, no, I'm, that's what I'm saying. If we don't do it, and it, and we don't have any fish kill, I mean, if they survive, then you're out.
Zach, what were you going to say?
Do we have any idea on the depth of our pond compared to like John Jenkins's or Joel Hingeveld's? Because I know they both have fish in theirs, and neither one are aerated.
I think both those are quite a bit deeper.
Hingeveld's is in the mid-30s, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, I think ours is probably 15 feet.
Six, six to 15, I think, are what our range is.
Jenkins's way deeper than that, yeah. I don't know how many feet deep they are, but this is really deep.
They're probably in the mid-30s range.
For sure.
Jenkins's?
He's closer to China.
Yeah, that's, this is pretty close, I think. It was at one point.
At one point, I thought that...
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. Jenkins's was. Now, whether they leveled off the base when they're done, I don't remember for sure.
Drove down there one time on the road. That pond's halfway out.
You know, the thought, and we, we haven't paid for the fish. I mean, that was something that the DNR and with the county, you know, provided that and stocked it. I haven't called them and asked, "Hey, if we have a fish kill, are you going to have an issue with that, and will you restock it?" I didn't, I couldn't ask them that.
Part of it is, you don't want a fish kill because you want the fish to grow, because, you know, it's the recreation part of it and whatnot, and being able to go out there and bring kids out there and let them catch some fish.
And Terry asked if people are fishing out there yet, you know, we haven't talked, and he says, you know, "Starting next year, that's something we need to look at as far as signage and some other things to put out there to allow people to fish." He says there's no reason why they can't already. He says we should put signs as far as size and catch and release and, and those type items, but he says it's ready to be used, so.
Would the aerator also work as far as the green algae buildup and stuff in the summertime, or?
It'll help some, but it's not necessarily going to kill it.
Would help some.
Oh, yeah. Anytime you have water movement, you know.
He likes our plant growth. I mean, he was, he says, though, some of the water movement that we've had, we had that early conversation with them, that with the amount of growth you have, at least that's happening there is, is good.
FYI, in case you ever see us do it, Beamer did say that fish are...
Sunlight's good for the fish. We're learning all kinds of things.
Make it a skating club? I'm just...
I don't know that I'll put a payload or out there.
That'd be a whole different council discussion if we have to come back and explain that one.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's kind of where we're at, I, you know...
And you're not sure if you'd need one, two, or three that's something that work?
Yeah, not the cost. The cost would cover the cost of what they feel it would cover for, you know, whether that's, you know, aerators are, you know, different in size and shape, and some are $1,500, some are $5,000, so.
What about funding for this?
My recommendation would be on a local option sales tax. You know, that's the fund, I guess, what we'd have. Like I said, we don't have that earmark specifically for this, we have funds in our local option sales tax account to certainly, you know, cover items like this, so.
I'd hate to see...
Will they be able to install it before the ground freezes, or?
If we give them the okay, they can have it here. It's more of getting the electrical work and some of that stuff done, probably more than anything.
We're going to have to talk to Jill's.
What's that? Just plug it in.
Got an extension cord?
She wants us to save money, there you go. Tell Steve I suggested that way.
To answer your question, Randy, it sounded like we could get one before the water froze over, they could have it. They wouldn't install it, that's something they would say, here's where the aerator port should go. We would be responsible for either installing it ourselves or hiring somebody.
Well, I think Terry would certainly come and help us, wouldn't he?
Yeah, I did visit with him. I actually had a separate meeting with him the other day or whatever, and I, they got boats, canoes, things, too, whatever, that I think he'd certainly help there.
Terry was the conversation?
Bolches, he's the director of the County Conservation Board, yeah.
I agree, and I agree with Scott, probably my bigger, or our bigger issue is getting electricity down. You know, the closest electricity we have to that pond right now is... Or we got to bore the road by some of the new... Which might go with that...
Quite a bit.
At least by half.
Well, I hate to, I was seeing this a minute ago, I hate to see the efforts that they put into it, the county did, on getting it stocked and getting this established as a recreation area. I see, you know, I would think it's a good investment. Now, you're saying up to 12,000, you can research it and spend no more, is that what you're asking?
Well, that's, well, I guess what we're asking, then, maybe, and not to exceed to that point, but...
Will that cover the electrical, too?
That is, that's with electrical and with the aeration, so.
Okay.
Based on the numbers I got, ballpark numbers I got today.
So we, we tried to inflate them to cover ourselves, the, you know, hopefully that number's on the high end, but...
When you come back with 8,000, it looks like you're saving a lot.
I hope so, typical architect, engineer.
Of course, we have the monthly bill.
Sure.
Electricity, yeah.
Okay. All right, are there any other comments, discussions, questions that we want to bring up? If not, is someone wanting to make a motion for not to exceed 12,000 to have Scott and Todd look into this further and get the work? Go on.
I'll make the motion. Support.
And just to clarify, that is up to 12,000, not to exceed?
Not to exceed.
Good. Last request for comments?
So we're going on one person's recommendation at this point, that we put this aeration system in, basically?
Yes, in a nutshell, yes.
My opinion, better to take a step forward than to back at this point in time.
Doesn't work, we don't like it, I go, the one person's recommendation, I can sell it to them. When we're done, it didn't work here.
I mean, what is the DNR as far as they stock the, the people who stock the fish and stuff, what do they, I mean, what do they say?
I haven't talked to the DNR. My only conversation, as Greg said, is the one with Terry Bolches, who deals with all their bodies of water and with fish, and I guess that's the business he's in. So I'm, I'm solely honestly going on his recommendation, so.
Would it be smart to make a call to a fisheries guy before we commit?
Well, this is, this is the fisheries guys that we talked to, and then Todd, you can share, I guess, what his thoughts were. He, he kind of gave you mixed, vague comments on it, like, ah, yeah, you could be okay, he didn't lend itself, but I don't, Todd, do you want to share?
Yeah, I talked to Colby at Beamer's Fisheries, which is the guy that would actually, I got the price code from, from the aerator. Yeah, he did have mixed feelings. He's like, yeah, they're good, should help, I don't know, you might not need it. If you don't have it, make sure you keep the snow off the ice. If you do have it, probably wouldn't hurt to keep the snow off the ice, or at least in patches. I mean, he wasn't, he wasn't a proponent of them, or he wasn't against them either. I mean, he just, but he sells them.
Well...
What about an Iowa, DNR fisheries guy, somebody that might know more specifically on fish habitat?
We can't. I mean, we can certainly, you know, research it more and maybe make some more phone calls. I mean, if you're still willing to give us the leniency, but hey, you do your due diligence to, to find out if it's necessary or not. I mean, we're, we're the same way. we're the same way. If I don't have to spend twelve thousand, I'm not just coming here to say I want to spend twelve thousand dollars. If it's not necessary, and DNR comes and says, oh, you know what, it's not that big a deal, you're going to be fine, you lose a few fish, we'll restock them again. Maybe we have that conversation with them.
I'd like to see that happen. I'd like another opinion, just, I mean, just because the situation we're in.
Yep.
Time-wise, well, would you be, still be willing to approve the amount for us to leave it up to me and Todd, the leniency to, to proceed with that, if we feel it's still necessary after having that conversation, or, you know, it puts another couple weeks out, otherwise coming back again?
I know.
What's the lead time on?
As long as you come back to us with the information.
Shoot us an email when you get that.
Let you know where we're at, for sure.
Brad had a good question.
What's the lead time on pumps and?
Get it in?
The way Colby from Beamer made it sound, lead time on the aeration system would not be very long. Power, I'm a little concerned about.
Within a week, we could have the aerators here. Getting the electrical hooked up is probably going to take longer.
I may, I may have to beg somebody pretty hard to get that worked.
I would certainly think that you should make sure you can have that done before you spend the money on the aerators.
Yes.
Check into that.
Can do that.
Get a second opinion. Keep us posted and.
I wish Terry would have told us this in July.
Yeah.
I think that got echoed to our office a couple of times.
That was about the exact words that they got, Todd, why couldn't he tell us that in July?
No.
Or a month ago, what he done, would have been.
Well, fortunate the weather's been cooperating. Let's hope it continues to do so. Who knows? Maybe we'll get that mild winter. Don't hold our breath. Okay, I need to take a roll call yet. Is there any other discussion before I take a roll call? May I have a roll call, please?
Kent.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Rensing.
Aye.
Thank you.
Number eight on our agenda is setting the date and time for our public hearing, and this is on the five-year capital improvement project, and we are proposing December second, two thousand fifteen, at four thirty in the afternoon. Have a motion to approve setting the date and time.
So moved. Support.
Thank you. A roll call, please.
Kent.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Rensing.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
And number nine on our agenda, we'd like to consider changing our next council meeting instead of Wednesday, November eighteen. We would like to move it to Thursday, November nineteen, at twelve o'clock noon. And this is that some of us may participate in the municipal leadership academy schooling classes, if you are interested in taking those, and also Scott will be out of town the day before. So, if that would work, do we have a motion to approve the change of our next council meeting?
I'll make the motion. Support.
Thank you. Again, that'll be at noon on Thursday, November nineteen. May I have a roll call, please?
Sawyer.
Aye.
Rensing.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Funker.
Aye.
Kent. Aye.
Last comments. Any comments?
Just quickly, Runger Street is open. Seating is done, the crack ceiling is done.
Great. Glad to hear that. Thank you, Todd. Lyle? Okay, counsel?
Come on.
Scott?
I have one comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't, I'm, I thought I heard.
Just thank you to the, all those that worked the voting booth yesterday. They had kind of a slow day, I understand, but for them, and then all those that did turn out and vote. It's our responsibility, it's our right, something we get to do, so, thank you to those that did vote.
And congratulations to the victors.
Yes.
Thank you.
Or condolences to Pete.
Aye, aye. Scott, did you have something?
Actually, just one thing, and I won't go into great detail on it. Actually, Pete and I the other day went to, it's called a Green Ribbon Committee. Pete has actually been part of a Sioux County, kind of a regional recreation trails group. We're looking at forming a six-county regional, region basically, of, of counties and stuff, and this is through the Iowa Parks Foundation. So, the Northwest Iowa Planning Development Corporation is kind of trying to coordinate this. There's kind of a two-step process. Step one is, is getting planning funds, where we could leverage up to twenty thousand dollars through the Iowa Parks Foundation, and basically that would be for, basically creating kind of a regional draw of quality of life and amenities like parks, like our community park that we're looking at, and working with Terry Bolches through the O'Brien County Conservation Board, the regional corridor with the Iowa Great Lakes, et cetera. So, just to make you aware, we're going to be looking at maybe going to all the, the counties to request a total of twenty thousand dollars of funding to use as matching funding to go after twenty thousand dollars from the Iowa Parks Foundation. They come up with forty thousand dollars